Greg, can you hear us okay? One of you?
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right, thank you. I don't know why the audio wasn't going through here, though.
Right, like to call the special meeting. The order. This is regards to the postponement of the budget hearing and annual meeting. The first. Order of business is the election of a. Of a chairperson for the meeting. And at this point, we accept nominations for that.
And then move right. Fine.
Are there other nominations?
Well, that's a veteran move.
Yeah. Um, will you both nominate? Okay. So, Brian. All those in favor to close now, nature?
Alright.
I mean, as a reminder, all district residents can vote and participate.
Yeah, so.
But not remotely.
Right.
Only in person. Confirm that was legal.
So, so the, the new business is considering moving. Or postponing the budget hearing and annual meeting from July twenty sixth to August second. Remember, we're gonna have our, we need to vote on email. We close nomination. I don't think we had to because there was one, right? Or do we have to? Oh, you still have to?
Always have.
Yeah, I moved to closing nominations, but now we gotta vote on.
Okay.
Be the two. The two divides.
Okay. Except the motion, I guess, or you already did that kind of.
Yeah, motion's on the floor. We just gotta go out and out everybody present.
Is it?
To have you choose.
Do we have to do roll call vote or?
Voice.
Uh, those in favor? For me to. Be the chairperson for the meeting.
Hi.
Opposed? I abstained.
Brian abstains for the record. Catch that fan?
I heard you say no last week.
Those, those without my whole voice. Gotta work on that. So, so the new business is the postponement of the budget hearing and annual meeting from July twenty sixth to August second. And we did that because we were doing our board. Retreat. On the twenty second and twenty seventh. Um, everyone remembers. And with this. Like to also consider kind of the time of it in the location. Right, so we had talked, we're going to do it in Hammond, right? Here in Roberts last year, uh, there was discussion of having it here from this location. Um, and then also discussion in the auditorium. The problem with the auditorium is we're not able to. Livestream. I sing livestreams, everybody can hear it, but they are not able to vote remotely. In that or participate in the votes. So.
And just.
Immediately following.
And then, you know, not just live streaming, just the recording, right? And the audio visual, yeah.
So.
And then I think two different times were discussed previously, six o'clock or seven o'clock. So we would. Need to decide on that as well.
But if we decided for the school board meeting.
The regular board meeting typically starts at seven o'clock. Well, six thirty used to be seven o'clock now, so. You know, if we wanted to do the annual meeting at six, if we can, that's, that probably would be best not to be too late of an evening.
Yeah.
Close to the desk, the meeting is immediately followed.
Right. I think Kurt also said six o'clock is good for him, right?
You can typically make it by that, yes.
He usually takes about fifteen minutes.
Annual meeting normally longer, there's a budget hearing. It'll be at least, it's usually about. Twenty minutes for the budget and maybe another. Twenty for, yeah.
And then there's like a little bit of a break and then can media follow it, right?
Yeah. Six o'clock makes sense.
Because we're looking at changing it. Alright, so I would make an motion to change. Budget hearing and annual meeting from July sixth to August second and at six P M. It happened in this. District. Yeah, district office room here immediately. Can we make it forever? Well, it has to be set at the annual meeting.
Would have to be set at that meeting annually. And I know Jen prefers to stick with the, you know, the fourth Monday in July. Seems to.
The venue.
Oh, the venue. And I still think it has to be set annually at the annual meeting.
I'd like to answer that question. Second. Um, any sort of motion, we have a second, any further discussion? The six work for everybody. Yes. With that. All those in favor for the movement of the meeting? TV installed tomorrow. Apparently it's time to call to confirm that right now, sorry. Sorry.
All in favor?
Oh, yes, all those in favor for the motion to move the meeting from July twenty second or twenty sixth to August second? At six P M. in the district office.
I.
Opposed? And motion carried. Any additional business from the floor? If everybody can participate in this, correct? No, not virtually. Okay. Okay.
And we adjourn the special meeting of the electorate.
Something.
Do.
This isn't annual meetings, it's a little different. A special meeting.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Right, meeting adjourned. Restroom up there.
Right, Brian, who has been done that?
Dave.
Jeff and I are gonna have a talk in the alley out back. I'm gonna race him.
You win. Just up or downstairs.
They tuck and roll, I can go play par.
Um, Brian, I was gonna read the recognition, thank you.
No, we delegated that.
What? Was it Josh? I thought it was Kirk.
That, were you reading or was Kirk gonna read the? Recognition?
I don't, I don't.
We thought that he was nice and concise and.
He's not here, so you got it.
There you go.
Missing on the works.
Yeah.
It was you, right? Pronounced Volantold.
Yeah. At least you'll pronounce the names correctly.
Well, I see one name I did right.
Okay. I hope.
Yeah, yeah. What do you want me to do?
It's.
Right.
Uh, twelve. Okay.
Yeah, two minutes. Yeah, I'm just gonna see what word I can chew up in here.
Yeah.
Name pronunciation is. Right. It's usually tricky or.
Right? We call the regular board meeting to order. First order of business, budget regions.
Much of the nation's to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one wish under God and in this bill liberty and justice for all.
Alright, roll call, Vince.
Here.
David.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Brian, here. Erica, here. Josh.
Yep.
This Kirk is absent. Uh, was, oh. Sorry, meeting will be, was a meeting properly notified?
Yes, meeting is properly noticed and as a reminder, per policy, it is being, uh, recorded and livestreamed.
Right, doesn't look like we have any visitor for public comments, I believe. Look like? Okay, uh, highlight on you, anything? Um, any comments by board members and superintendent?
Um, just FYI, uh, we had two agent benefit committee meetings tonight. First one was with the Masters Plus Group and the second with the teachers. I don't know, I'll maybe let the board members. Speak to the details.
Wage and benefit, we have two representatives from each. Building and one from the virtual academy. And talked about the need that. Ask them to validate. Things that they express in the meeting, take them back to their peers and. Acting as representatives rather than just. Voice.
We're gonna develop guiding principles, um, but again, kind of to the main objectives, well. Uh, the main objective is to talk about future compensation. Mainly, but benefits are part of that discussion and then, uh. You know, to brainstorm and validate, uh, the, the plan that we'd like to ultimately present for. Question one on the referendum in April. And, uh, yeah, that's the main purpose. And then Plan B, it would be, you know, if that doesn't pass, what can we? Do to possibly increase salary, um, within the constraints of our current budget and. Fiscal landscape. That's much more challenging. And we talked a little bit about the current biennial budget and, and where's that, where that is at? Speaking of, um, you know, joint finance committee, again, uh. Basically stuck to their original plan of, uh, relying solely on the federal COVID relief. Dollars, um, I think one of our representatives said it would be irresponsible to ignore that large, that two point one billion flowing into the state. You divide it five hundred ways, it's, it's not a lot of money and it's not its intended purpose, but, and that's what, uh. You know, that's education advocates are advocating for is. That's not that what that was intended for and that's just gonna help us. Ca- cover our operating expenses and it's, it was intended to be a COVID stimulus pack, not stimulus, relief package to pay for the costs incurred. Unexpected, um, so. It's a long story short, right now, it's not looking great, um. And it's gonna be probably a long drawn out thing and the word, the, the good thing is the governor is a pro education governor and he said he will veto. It entirely, um. If that package comes before him, so it remains to be seen. So, yeah. That's where we're at with that.
Didn't wanna end on that. So, okay.
It is what it is right now.
Alright, uh, next, the scheduled presentation by guests and staff members. The election and now analysis presentation from Baker Tilly, uh, with represent, Don Lipto.
Welcome, Don.
Thank you very much. Is my speaker okay on your end?
Yep, we can hear you very well.
Good, thank you.
So, Don, uh, if you want to present anything, you, you know, you're welcome to on the screen and show, it'll show up here in the boardroom. Also printed out all the materials, uh, that you had sent, um, last week and then even your, uh, email this morning. Uh, so the board all has those materials in front of them, so just know that you reference them, maybe just refer them to the, to the proper document.
Okay, um, I, I don't have a PowerPoint or formal presentation. I'll provide you with. Some background information and. Some context and detail related to some of the materials that. Uh, your superintendent provided and, um, then would welcome. Uh, discussion and questions on anything that you, you've heard or seen in that regard. In way of just a brief, um, introduction. I spent twenty five years of my career in public education as a superintendent. And served in rural districts. What you would call C S A's and also, uh, in a suburban district during that twenty five year period. I got my twenty five year pin in two thousand and six and retired and went to work. For Baker Tilly. Uh, you may be aware that Baker Tilly has a significant presence, uh, in Wisconsin. My current role at Baker Tilly. Is, uh, one hundred percent focused on, uh, helping school districts. Plan and execute. Tax elections, uh, whether that be for. You know, a recurring or non-recurring, uh, operating referendum, uh, or seeking permission to issue debt. And so, again, my work at Baker Tilly. Is to, uh, provide school districts with, uh, resources, uh, data. Uh, research, uh, best practices. And. Provide whatever support, uh, that they need and want, uh, in preparing for those elections. In terms of some of the material that, uh, I understand you received. Uh, one of them is just a general, uh, flyer talking about, uh, the scope of Baker Tilly's. Uh, referendum planning services. And on that particular, um, handout, uh, there's. Six or eight bullets of, of things that we do for school districts. Uh, all of those are à la carte, so school districts, uh, access what they need and want. Um, and, and every school district is different in that regard. The, uh, the two things that we do the most on that, um. On that list of items, uh, are voter files and feasibility surveys. I believe you also had, uh. A handout that's kind of summarized, uh, Baker Tilly's methodology and, and doing surveys for school districts. In addition to my work in Minnesota, uh, over the years, I've also done similar survey work in. Rice Lake, Eau Claire, Ashkosh, Oconomowoc, Waukesha, Elko, Hamilton. And West Alice, just to, to name a few. As I said, the school districts that, um. Utilize our feasibility survey, uh, process are basically trying to find out. Um, what the level of support is for whatever proposal is under consideration. Again, whether that be. An operating referendum, uh, or something to, a referendum to issue debt. Uh, so, uh, we help them determine what the level of support is within the community generally for the, for the proposal. Uh, and also specifically for key elements of the proposal. So, for instance, the most recent survey for Prescott was looking at, uh, not only building a new school, but potentially building a new auditorium. Doing deferred maintenance work, uh, and so parts of the survey, uh, measured support for each of those. Um, key elements of, of their proposal. Our surveys also test, uh, what the community's, um, tax tolerance is, uh, in, in, in terms of. Uh, willingness to pay higher property taxes to fund, you know, whatever that proposal might be. Once the survey is completed, uh, then the school board administration, you know, have, uh, keyed data. Uh, to help them plan and move forward, to help them evaluate the feasibility of what they're considering. And guidance on, uh, what tax rate appears to be, uh, acceptable. Now, uh, in terms of Baker Tilly's methodology. When we're working with a district, uh, testing for feasibility, uh, for a future referendum. We almost always use a scientific random sample survey. And, um, in a scientific random sample survey, uh, initially, we. Evaluate the demographics of the district. Uh, so before we start, uh, any of our phone calling, we know how many men, how many women, how many eighteen to twenty four year olds, how many over sixty five? How many parents, how many non-parents? Uh, how many people always vote, uh, how many people never vote? And a variety of other, uh, key demographic characteristics. Once we know the demographic profile of registered voters living in the district. Then our call center targets those percentages such that. Uh, if fifty five percent of registered voters are women, uh, we aim to do fifty five percent of our interviews, um, with women. Same with age, same with parent status. And there's a lot of science, uh, that would support. The notion that. If yours, if your random sample mirrors the demographics of everybody, uh, it's more likely to. Be accurate, uh, and predictive and be a, a solid planning tool for the board. Um, over the years, uh. Over ninety percent of our clients that have used our methodology have been successful, uh, on election day. And over the last couple of years, I believe it's about ninety two percent success rates. Now, the methodology I described, um. I would differentiate it for you, um, as compared to what. Researchers call opt-in surveys. Uh, with an opt-in survey, uh, either the survey is mailed out in the community. Or it's put on the district's website. And then people either opt in or they opt out. And opt out, of course, is they just don't do it. Now, opt-in surveys, uh, can be helpful to engage people and give people an opportunity to give their two cents worth. But, uh, there are problems with opt-in surveys when you're using them, uh, to test for the feasibility of a future referendum. I'll give you an example, uh, of one you can watch for in the new, on the, uh, in the news on Wednesday. The Grand Forks, North Dakota School District. Has a referendum tomorrow. I don't remember the exact amount, but it's somewhere around ninety million dollars. Uh, they have both operating, uh, and debt issuance, uh, on the ballot, similar to what you had, uh, in April. And as part of their planning process, they did an opt-in survey. Uh, now remember with an opt-in survey, people choose whether to participate or not and there are no demographic controls. In their survey, they had, uh, one thousand five hundred and thirty people, uh, take the survey. Uh, but when we peeled the onion back and looked, looked at the results of those, uh, fifteen hundred and thirty participants who opted in. Seventy four percent of them, uh, were parents of kids attending the district. And twenty nine percent were employees. Well, you might imagine that if three quarters of your respondents are, are parents and thirty percent are employees. You're going to get, uh, an elevated unrealistic, um, level of support for, um, that referendum. Now, how that plays out tomorrow, uh, who knows? But. Uh, I definitely would not have wanted to make, uh, high stakes decisions based on an opt-in survey in that particular, in that particular case. So, again, uh, our methodology, uh, if we were to do a project for you, if we found out that twenty five percent of. Your registered voters were parents of school age kids, um, we would not, uh, survey more than twenty five percent of the registered voters. Who were parents. We want the, uh, that random sample survey demographically to mirror the demographics of everybody. And when you do that, um, again, you get more accurate and more reliable information to. Move forward with, with your planning. The other, uh, handouts I believe that you maybe have copies of, uh, there, there was an article published by. The American Association of School Administrators, uh, for a school district, uh, by the name of North Branch. Uh, that's a Minnesota school district. And in that particular article, it talked about, uh, an election in May of two thousand and sixteen that, that they lost. And then it talks about everything they did between, uh, May of sixteen and May of seventeen, uh, when they actually won. Uh, with a larger, uh, dollar amount than what, uh, they had done in two thousand and sixteen. Baker Tilly was, uh, deeply involved in that second try for North Branch. I can't remember, uh, Tim, what else you may have provided, but maybe that's a good time for me to stop and. Respond to any initial questions that, uh, a board might have.
Yeah, I didn't include that North Branch one in, uh. Board materials tonight, but I, I certainly do have that. Yeah, the main thing was to just describe the, the differences between opt-in and your, uh, scientific random. Uh, sample surveys, um, one of the questions maybe I think's relevant to the board is, you know, you have an à la carte of services. Knowing, you know, uh, referendum last April and, and we're gonna have something very similar, most likely with the two questions. Um, you know, what, what are some of the, we're not, obviously not. They're not relevant, all of them. Um, what are some of the, you know, recommendations or, or the services that you would recommend? Um, and then also, you know, can you combine some of them, like a post referendum? Post-election analysis with, uh, you know, uh, scientific random sample survey that does the feasibility? And then, within your survey, are those questions able to, able to be, um? Customized?
I'll start with the last question, um. The, every questionnaire that we, uh, do for a school district is, is customized. I've probably done five hundred surveys in the last thirty years and. There, there are two, two questionnaires that are identical. So definitely it's customized, uh, to the district. When we start a project like that. We initially ask the, uh, school district to provide us with background information, uh, that's relevant. In your case, that would relate to, you know, what happened in two thousand and twenty one and everything leading up to two thousand and twenty one. We would get all that, uh, background information and then we would, uh, produce a first draft of a questionnaire. Send that to you. You mark it up, uh, give us feedback and send it back to us. And typically the design of the questionnaire, uh. Ends up being three to six drafts, you know, back and forth until we're all satisfied that we've got, we've got what we want.
What's an ideal range of questions as, as far as the number?
Uh, the average, uh, length is thirty five questions. And the, uh, the reason that that is what we use as an average. Is that the American Association of Public Opinion Research. Says that you should try to limit time on the phone, uh, to roughly fifteen minutes. And a thirty five item questionnaire typically takes thirteen to fifteen minutes on the phone. Uh, in terms of the number of interviews, uh, based on the. Size of your district and the number of registered voters, uh, we would recommend two hundred and fifty completed, uh, interviews. And to put that in some context, if, um, on the way home tonight, you've got on, uh, NPR or, uh, CNN or Fox News. And you hear about a national survey of all registered voters. The, the average number of, um. Phone calls and, and completed interviews for national surveys were about twelve hundred. Uh, so think about twelve hundred to, you know, three hundred million, uh, as compared to two hundred and fifty, you know, in your district. So that's a very adequate, um, sample. So, again, um, thirty five is the average length, uh, we'd recommend two hundred and fifty completed interviews. In terms of the question you started with, you know, what things are most often used and can you combine them? The three things on the list that are most often. The three things on the list that are most often used by both Wisconsin and Minnesota clients I've worked with are the feasibility survey, that would be number one, the voter file and target structure would be number two, and the post-election analysis would be number three. Now, I haven't commented on the post-election analysis, but in short, what that is, is if we were to do one in St. Croix Central, we would get the registered voter database from your April 2021 referendum, and then we would go through it and do a demographic analysis. Now, we know that you had about a 33% turnout, but what percentage of your parents voted? What percentage of 18- to 24-year-olds voted? What percentage of retirees voted? We would look at eight or 10 demographic factors, and then produce a report essentially showing you the demographic profile of April 2021. And that sometimes can provide guidance when you're looking at a possible April 2022. An example of that might be, you might look at that post-election analysis and find out that your parent turnout was, you know, 40%. Well, that's not going to do it. You need to do better than that. And similarly, whether you're talking about parents, non-parents, or age, or what part of the district people live in geographically, male, female, you basically look at the profile of April 21, and based on that, try to impact the turnout for an April 2022. So that's the post-election analysis. And again, some of our clients do all three of those top three I mentioned, some do just one or two out of the threes. So it's based on what their needs are and what they feel they can afford, you know, from a budget point of view in planning and preparing for April 2022.
Don, does the feasibility study include, I mean, the preparation of voter file and target structure? Are those two related in the same... I mean, you have to do one to get the other, correct?
Going back to the survey, when we're going to do a feasibility survey, we purchase multiple databases. We also use public databases. And the reason for that and the purpose of that is to get as much information demographically as we can about registered voters living within the school district. As I said before, we use that then to target how many interviews we want with men, or women, or parents, et cetera. When that survey is all done, and we have the results of the survey, some of our clients then ask us to prepare a voter file and target structure. And the voter file and target structure looks at all registered voters living within the district and evaluates how likely they are to participate in April of 2022. And in making that determination, we look at voter history for the last nine elections conducted within the jurisdiction. And then we also look at how likely different demographic groups are to support the proposal based on the results of the survey and the information in the database. So again, some of our school clients will do the feasibility survey, and that's all they'll do. Others will ask us to prepare a voter file in addition to the survey.
Okay. Now, I understand. I confused the database with the voter file. So you have to do the database for the feasibility study, but after that, you might find some things like, for strategy, who we need to target for our communication is what really the preparation of voter file and target structure is about, correct?
Correct.
Looking for imbalances or strengths.
Yeah. And as far as that post-election analysis that I talked, that's a demographic study of 2021. I sent you a copy of a study I did for Osceola. So if you look through your emails, you can find that. That'll at least give you an example of what that looks like when you do one.
So obviously, one of the things we'd most be interested in would be the scientific random sample survey. Don, can you speak a little bit about the cost per survey?
Now, for a school district of your size, assuming that we would complete 250 random sample interviews with a survey of 35 items, that would run $79 per completed interview. So for $79, Baker Tilly purchases all of the databases. We design the questionnaire. We contract with a professional call center to complete the random sample 250 interviews, do all the data analysis, write the reports, and present the results.
Purchase survey, or purchase database, design a survey, contact, contract with the call center, do the data analytics, and report out. And then I think in my notes, I put, you know, you talk about a recommendation, right? You give your opinion on the feasibility.
Right. Part of the survey gives the board administration Baker Tilly's opinion about the feasibility of the proposal you're considering. It also shows you what level of support there was for the proposal in general, but also what levels of support there were for elements of the proposal. I can give you a quick example of that from my work I did in Prescott. When we did their feasibility survey for their debt issuance, we showed that we thought the proposal could pass at about 55%. However, the auditorium, which was part of the package they also wanted, that had a lower support level, and our recommendation to them was to remove that from the package and present it as a separate up-or-down ballot question. Now, as you could imagine, that caused a lot of discussion because, you know, the board was committed to building the new school, but also building the auditorium, and they didn't want to do that. At the end of the day, they finally decided to go with our recommendations. So ballot question one was the new school, and ballot question two was the auditorium. And the school passed by... question one passed by less than 10 votes, and the auditorium went down by a much larger margin. And so it was pretty clear to everybody around the table at the time that if that had been packaged altogether, it would not have passed. So in their case, they built their new school, and they had the architects design it to accommodate the auditorium in the future. And I don't know how many years went by, but the good news is they eventually passed the auditorium as well and built that. Ended up getting what they wanted. So again, the survey tests support for elements of the proposal, the overall proposal, and it also... I think last time, Tim, you told me that the total tax impact was $198 on $100,000, if I recall, and...
$200,000, yeah. $200,000 home.
Yeah. So it also tested that to see, you know, if that was a feasible amount to ask for. One question that I always get, and I'm guessing one of you has already thought about it, is with cell phones and caller IDs and all that stuff, how do you do scientific random sample surveys by telephone? And the answer is, you do them by telephone. And over the last five years, the percentage of interviews done on cell phones is now around 50% to 55%, and landlines typically are 40% or 45%. So over half of our interviews are done by cell, and the cell phones are part of the data that we purchase when we're preparing for a project.
Don, this is Jeff Rupp. Very familiar with Baker Tilly. I have a lot of friends that work there, mostly on the audit side, so I appreciate your good work on behalf of Baker Tilly. At a committee meeting earlier this evening, there was a suggestion that we should do a survey before we decide what we should ask for, and even on a rudimentary basis. So, you know, we're probably... on the operation, you know, we do 100% of average, 105, 110, but to have some sense that we probably are going to end up at 105, is that not more helpful than to say, "Don, just tell us what the community will support"? Should we have some baseline against which to ask questions?
Yeah. Good question. In almost 100% of our surveys, when we get to the point where we're going to be testing for willingness to pay, in terms of what the community is, you know, say they're willing to do in raising property taxes, we work with the administration and typically identify a range of either three or four benchmarks. So, you know, let's say based on... let's talk about the debt issuance, for example. You know, maybe depending on what you actually end up doing, you know, maybe it's going to be a tax rate of somewhere between, you know, 50 and $125 increase per year. So when we get to that part of the survey, after going back and forth, we might decide, let's test 60, 100, and 140, or let's test 50, 75, and 100. So essentially, what we're doing is we're testing a range of tax impacts where, you know, the district believes that at the end of the day, we're going to be... we want to be somewhere in that range. Similarly, for operating, whether it's a recurring or a non-recurring, we would typically test a range. Sometimes that range is three benchmarks, sometimes it's four. So at the end of the day, when we've completed our 250 interviews and everybody's responded to that question about what they'd be willing to do, we come back and say, "It looks like your feasibility number is approximately $79." So we determine where along that line, from low to high, you're ending up in a feasible spot in terms of tax impact.
Don, do you... So some of the feedback I've heard over the years is, "You didn't include an auditorium, so I voted against it." So do you have people that say they'll vote for the higher tax impact, but they don't also support the next lower one? And, you know, so are you confident that the people that said, "Okay, I'll pay $120, $120 bucks," that they also would support 80?
Yeah. Well, you certainly hear all kinds of things, including the example that, you know, you just mentioned, that we wanted a bigger high school, we wanted a larger auditorium, so we're going to vote no because you didn't go big enough for us? You know, you hear that, but I would say, based on my experience at least, that that's very unusual, and that's not something that's going to, you know, be responsible for defeating a referendum. It's more likely on the other end where, you know, people are saying it's too much.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Don, you mentioned, so for the scientific random sample survey, $79 for 250 interviews is $19,750. What about the preparation of voter file and target structure? How many interviews or surveys or whatever do you do, and what's the cost per?
If, for a school district that does the survey first, we are able to provide the voter file and target structure, in your example, would be $1,450.
Okay. Thank you.
And the reason that that's, I would say, quite inexpensive is because some of the data that we need to do the voter file and target structure, we've already purchased for the survey.
Okay.
So we're not going to be asking you to pay for that twice, if you follow my...
Yes.
...drift.
And then we talked a little bit on the phone about timeline, right? We're like, we've got to work back from April, you know, and end of January for a resolution. So what does that mean for all the other things we talked about from community task force, the survey, and discussion, and final resolutions? So can you speak a little bit about your timeline and all your experience?
Yeah. The... after we talked, Tim, I got off the calendar and looked a little harder at what might make sense. And there are two windows that I think would work for St. Croix Central. And it depends on when your community task force is going to be finished with its work, and also relates to how quickly the board is willing to make a decision about go or no-go. So one window is if we started working on the design of a questionnaire after Labor Day, we could be done with data collection, finished with all of our interviews, and, you know, working on our data analysis and reports by the second or third week of October. So with that window, again, if you make a decision to invest in planning, you know, no later than August, and we start working on a questionnaire right after Labor Day, you've got all your stuff back by mid to late October. If that timeline is too quick, the other window would be to start working on the questionnaire in early to mid-October, and then we probably would go on the phones during our interviews the middle of November. We'd want to give, you know, a week or 10 days for the... be on the phones, and then you get your... again, you get your data back by the end of November. And this ties into one other question I heard that I didn't respond to. The... if you have a task force that, you know, comes forward to the board with some preliminary recommendations, things to do, the survey can certainly be very helpful to incorporate those into the questionnaire so that you can test them to see what level of support there is for the different elements. so that you can test them to see what level of support there is for the for the different elements before you make a final decision on what goes on the ballot in in April. Either of those windows I talked about work with, you know, I think it's, was it seventy days before the election that you have to pull the trigger? Or something like that?
Yes.
Both of those windows work for that in terms of having all the information back and time to chew on it before you have to decide. The first one gives you a little more time to work with, work with the data, you know, before people are actually going to vote.
Yeah, how long typically for your, once you start the first phone call to the last phone call, what's the typical time?
Typically, a week.
Okay.
Don, can you speak to the right side of your bullet points? Content and structure ballot questions, communication, planning, design of informational media, consultation on campaign organization leadership, consultation of campaign execution? As I understand it, school cannot spend money on a yes campaign. They can only provide information. But I feel one of the things that we failed, the community failed, is in our communication planning. We don't have a newspaper that covered anything we did. They didn't even cover the school board election. They didn't, I mean, they didn't bother to interview school board candidates. They just don't cover us. We don't have a local newspaper. We'd have no, you know, there's a River Falls radio station, but it's not covering any of our stuff. So I do think we need help on making sure we communicate to the community both for input and then actually needs and supporting a referendum. So talk a little bit about those services that you might provide.
Yeah. Well, the first thing that you said is is the most important, and that is that school district can pick, can pay for planning that's informational in nature, but can't spend taxpayer money on advocacy. So using the communication bullet that you referenced, I would say probably twenty-five percent of the clients I work with do contract with Baker Tilly to get some help with with communications. And we have some consultants that are expert in that area that we work with. And we would put you in touch with one or more of those individuals. And if you were comfortable with what she or he, you know, was proposing to do, then you could choose to either contract with Baker Tilly for those communication services or contract directly with, you know, that communication consultant. That particular service is more frequently accessed by small and medium-sized school districts that don't have, you know, the size or the budget to have a director of communications. And so, again, when you, when you access that kind of help, what you're accessing is to someone to tell you how can you communicate most effectively for this referendum? Not advocate, but communicate. That's print materials, that's website materials. And we have two or three people who do that all the time and they're, they're very good. So if you ended up contracting with with Baker Tilly for a survey and you wanted to find out what would it cost to get some help with, you know, developing a master communication plan for the district and executing that plan, we'd be able to put you in touch with the person who could provide that information. And then based on your needs and budget, you could decide to access it or not.
Any other questions?
Don, you're, you have a St. Paul phone number, you're in Minnesota, but you listed a whole bunch of things in Wisconsin. The strategy, Wisconsin versus Minnesota. You're super comfortable that you know how to handle Wisconsin voters versus a Minnesota rules and
Yes, the, as it relates to, you know, doing a survey or a voter file target structure or, you know, what I talked about with communications, it essentially does not make any difference. You know, whether it's a Wisconsin or Indiana or Utah or Minnesota. It's the same services. The, in Minnesota, you can't spend taxpayer money advocating for a referendum either. You know, in in Wisconsin, the language is recurring and non-recurring for operations. In Minnesota, it's operating referendum, but it's still operating money. So it's, it's not, it's not an issue, you know, as we cross the state line.
Good, thanks.
All right, Don, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time and feel free to get back to me if there are other questions.
All right, you bet. We'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thanks, Don.
We could talk more about that, I think it's item twelve, twelve B or C.
All right, next on the agenda, financial reports.
Okay, the bank account balance is as of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Citizen State Bank checking was one hundred and seven thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. The Citizen State Bank money market was thirty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-one cents. The Citizen State Bank Money Market Fund forty-six had fifty-three dollars and seven cents. Citizen State Bank Money Market Suicide Prevention had sixteen thousand five hundred and one dollars and thirteen cents. Euro dollars in the local government investment pool for a total bank account balance of one hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents.
Who makes up this present?
It's up to the second. All those in favor?
I don't know.
Opposed? You can hear the truth. Yes, break that motion here. All right, next is consideration of consent agenda. Approval of minutes, the school board meeting, May seventeenth, the board learning meeting on June seventh. Approval of the bi-monthly bills for June twenty twenty-one. Approval of resignations and retirement. Larry White, can it? Just like this.
Yep.
Shane Coach. The, the jobs are just the, the position, okay? Eight hours ground supervisor, Shane Coach, seven and three-quarter hour middle school sped paraprofessional. Taylor Woller, one FTE, middle school assistant football coach. Pearson Bozeniler, one FTE, middle school assistant cross-country coach. Approval appointments and contract modifications. Emily Benoy, one FTE, speech language pathologist. Dustin Hayes, one FTE head varsity, not volleyball, head varsity boys' basketball coach. Ian Horton, one FTE, middle school assistant football coach. Pearson Bozeniler, one FTE, middle school head cross-country coach. Jeff Sanders, one FTE, JV girls' basketball coach. The approval of curricular modification requests for students to enroll in full-time and part-time virtual courses for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. And then approval of sixty-six oh three oh one service agreements for deaf part hard of hearing program with the River Falls and Prescott school, school districts. That's exhibit ten.
Who rules consent and, and opposed to being read?
Again.
All those in favor?
I don't know.
Opposed? Administrative reports, student enrollment update.
So just a couple of things to highlight, again, the first column are the students in seats. This year was atypical in that we actually ended with more students in seats than we started with in September, but of course, the the asterisk is, you know, the COVID year, we had more students than usual choose to go virtual and a few came back at semester time. So I think all that to that reason. Speaking of virtual, we have one hundred, we end of the year, one hundred and fifty-eight full-time resident students in our virtual, thirty-nine part-time and two hundred and seventy-two enrolled in our charter, which is all open enrolled students. So that's a total of four hundred and sixty-nine total students, full-time or part-time at end of the year in our virtual schools. And then lastly, our free and reduced lunch rate ended at twenty-four point two seven percent as compared to the state average of thirty-seven point five. This is the last one of the school year. We won't have one in July and August until we start up again in September.
Right. It doesn't matter if you do or if you don't, it is what it is.
It is what it is.
Next, the key work of our school board, we have a volunteer to read the student staff and community recognition.
And can I read the
Celebrity presentation.
Yes. Can I read the name who dominated first?
Typically, not just the students or staff receiving it.
Hey, David Olson, congratulations on being selected as national finalist in the Association of Woodworking and Furniture Suppliers Competition in Las Vegas. You're at our chair. Five figures amazing. Well done. We are proud of you. Carson Hensman, congratulations on your selection to the WFCA Allstate First Team as a, so and defensive lineman. Mason Dato, congratulations on being selected as an honorable mention. Hunter in the WFCA Allstate team. Congratulations, Gabe, Gabe Seiler, congratulations on being selected as an honorable mention offensive back on the WFCA Allstate team. Jackson Pettit, congratulations, Jackson, on being selected as an honorable mention kicker on the WFCA Allstate team. Elaine Stark, Callie Jordan, Andrea Felberg, Tina Bauer, Kim Gunderson, Anne Katner, Chris Dino, Michaela Johnson. Thank you for your important work with the planning, setup and decorating for the retirement and recognition ceremony on June fourth. Your work and dedication to this important grant is much appreciated. The ceremony was very classy and the fitting of our culture at SCC. Jerry Wold and Greg Green, thank you for your help in setting up the auditorium for the retirement and recognition ceremony. You are appreciated. Randy Pfeifer, thank you for your amazing work and talent in building all the sets and props and technical expertise with the sound, lights and special effects for the Wizard of Oz. Your dedication to our amazing auditorium, the student, staff and community is beyond compare. You are so very appreciated. Tammy Simonson and the food service staff, thank you for providing terrific breakfasts prior to the staff recognition and retirement ceremony. As always, you provide a great food and great service. You are appreciated.
Thank you. Congratulations all. Next on the agenda, discussion of future district needs and priorities. Already back to it.
Yeah, so you saw Don Lefto and Baker Tilly. We used Morris Leatherman last time. And we all saw another company that does the same thing is School Perceptions. So there are three reputable companies that I'm aware of and that I've had discussions with in terms of with Wold Architects and Engineers and Market and Johnson. They like all three. So I, you know, this was just, he he had reached out, you know, and I thought, oh, you know, talked to him and said, I mind doing a presentation? Doesn't mean we're locked into them. I'm thinking be prudent to have the same discussion with with Morris Leatherman and School Perceptions and get quotes from them. If you're okay with me proceeding with that. And then, you know, either engaging them if you want me to do that or bring it back if you wanted to do interviews, if you thought it was, you know, that important and a board level thing. Looking for your input on that and the next, next steps. You want me to do that or you want to be involved or committee to choose company, but
Did we use this kind of service in our recent
We did not. We used the opt-in, which lesson learned.
Okay. Have we used this kind of service before?
We did in two thousand fourteen.
Use School Perceptions in?
We, we use the Donovan Group's opt-in for this. No, Morris Leatherman last time.
Oh, we did.
Yeah, but just, just like this, and it was, it was, it was spot on. I don't recall the cost. I do, I did pull it out. Look, I think it was, it certainly wasn't thirty-some questions. It was twenty-some. What we settled on. But I trust their expert confidence what they do. If it's fifteen minutes, it's fifteen minutes. But I certainly see the value and I'm reminded of why that makes sense to do the scientific random sample survey. And a ninety-two percent success rate. I'm guessing Morris Leatherman's School Perceptions have a very similar one. They have similar methodology, I believe, as well, but I can find all that out. But, you know, nineteen thousand dollars is a, is a big investment, but if it's ninety-two percent accurate, I think that's, you know, it's, it's, it's an important, I think, strategy to use.
It looks like they come up, that's remind us. Four percent or something like that.
Yeah.
Looks like, looks like something like that.
Yeah.
Which is pretty, it's pretty accurate.
So if their survey comes back that they're like, don't have appetite for it, then we order?
Well, that's where I think we engage their services for fourteen hundred or whatever and say, all right, so, you know, what you know, looking at the data and the rate, you know, what, how much less are we going to have to ask for, for it to pass?
And it might, it might be zero, right? But that, so based on what he said, that they should be able to give us
Yeah.
A range. Or you're very close at the bottom, it's
Even the
slightly below that, you might have to do another
Yeah.
follow-up. But
And and he said he could kind of combine the two, do a little post, you know, do a post referendum, some questions about, you know, if you get that input, so you could kind of do two into one for that same price is what I was kind of getting at in our conversation. I don't know if he answered it exactly.
Thanks for talking to other companies to look at potentially do that kind of thing. I'd like to see this kind of thing from other companies as well and possibly have some interaction. I know we have to jump on that and get rolling if we're going to talk to somebody else.
Could bring
presentation, but I think to really gauge their services and what they offer, another experience, that kind of, this kind of interaction.
Okay.
Was Prescott pleased with their work?
And I haven't talked to any of them yet, started with this.
To, you know, with the recent in the area. Yeah, were they happy with them? Do they feel like they were served well?
And and I still impressed, got to have the same superintendents when they went, so I could talk to both of them, get their take on that as well. And then Rice Lake as well, I know very well.
I personally think we kind of owe it to the electorate to ask them what they think in, in a scientific thing, say, okay, the people are going to go this way, you think?
Yeah.
Give us your input. I think we need that data point to finalize before we move forward.
And I know the Donovan Group's post-refendum opt-in survey, you know, again, wasn't scientific necessarily, but, you know, the the data kind of told us three things. The timing was, wasn't great in the middle pandemic. Timing wise, it felt rushed and the communication, you know, could have been better, you know? And, you know, more time, right? So all those things are very fixable, in my opinion. I, it, it wasn't like, like Joe Donovan said, it wasn't like they didn't have an appetite for supporting our staff and our district. It was more kind of, ah, time's not right and maybe it could take a little longer, communicate better. I acknowledge all those.
Yeah, that's why I kind of think, you know, one of the things that the public came back with was we need more time to dig, digest this, which is why I said we probably got to get
Get moving.
soon. You know, it gives us more time to refute rumors or bad information or sort it out or to better explain or whatever is needed. You know, it gives us more time to tackle those issues that I think we had last time. It's bad information out there given by some individuals and there wasn't enough time to really thoroughly explain, no, that's not exactly accurate, this is what it is. The more time we have to do that type of stuff, the more we can sort it out of that.
And I, I Googled this before the, before and there's a couple of these articles here that we had from, and it says, using technology, things that, I don't know what the additional cost would be. I know he gave us the price for the calls and that stuff, but I mean, this company or whatever I know he gave us the price for the calls and that's up, but I mean, this company or whatever company has. More ideas on using technologies. I think that helps what you're saying like. If you have it out there, so there isn't, there isn't the back and forth like that. I mean. You can have your opinion on things, but you can't have your opinion on. The actual data facts, right? So I think, you know, some of these articles that even that Don has written, you look at some of these. Goes in like, you know, the language that you use and all those things. I know that's a physical cost to get into all that, but. Whoever we use, if you were.
I'll check on that.
I mean, this is, the article was older, like fifteen or seventeen, but it was about using technology to give your message to us.
So I know market and Johnson um offers that and I believe it's, you know, part of the package. Um that same thing, but certainly should check with Baker Tilly and the other two. We can ask that same what for your. Communications slash marketing. You know, package, how much would that cost? Cause yeah, that's 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 huge. Obviously, um so am I hearing invite the other two for the July nineteenth board meeting, the next board meeting and do the same thing?
The other one though, to me though, it depend of that step one was getting the task force coming because that's an input into some of the questions potentially. So it's kind of the what it felt like he was saying. So that's something that. Is step one. We probably have to start that conversation here in the next month if we want something.
Without it in September.
I agree, because when he said we gotta do that, I'm like, that's gonna be a challenge to get the community task force, especially over the summer. I said, I like window two.
Yeah, that's what it kind of felt like is it was the only option.
It is, yeah. Um it still could be done by, you know, Christmas time at the latest, he said, late November if we.
Yeah, then we.
I I agree, it's that that would be rushed, getting task force together like next month.
January, we have to submit the referendum, the questions.
Yeah.
So we like, we're actually submitting it to votes. So we'd have to make.
The last one seemed like it was like. As a parent or we got this survey, it seemed like it was asking us, do you think this is a good idea? The next thing it was. This is the question that was. That's people thought, I don't know, my perception was, oh, they're they're considering the referendum or whatever. And then the next thing it was, is a referendum.
Well, I mean, the timing on that though was like November, October, November with that survey.
Yeah, and it was terrible timing with everybody getting their tax bills.
So I mean, so there actually was a month's gap, but just everything felt. Thing weird last year.
Well, they're asking. Hold a survey. You know, that's what it felt like is.
Yeah, all all I'm saying is like it's if if that's what it felt like, it feels like if we do start on October. Get it kind of end of November, it's almost the exact same. Timing as the last one that.
It will be nice because well, the normal school year, so some of that engagement.
Plus it's a hundred, right? It can be air conditioned. He pops Billy bars.
I mean, really, I know it's frustrating, it's difficult to. I've heard the cats. You know, but. I hate to just sit back and say it'll get in September.
Excited about when they're bringing their kids back to school through kind of thinking about when they walk into that building for the first time in a year or what.
So so we do that halfway. So did we do the task force and we want to launch a task force? I'm assuming we'd like some. Probably better or different, maybe that better, but different representation, right? We kind of got that feedback.
Correct. I I believe we need to do some personal invites and get. Uh you know, not just leave it to so opt-in, right? That's much like the survey, this hey, who has to show up and a few of the loudest voices dominate it, right? I think we should be intentional with. Inviting, personally inviting. Um key members of our community.
And then do we want to do a community meeting, like a informational meeting that people can sign up?
Replicate the two thousand fourteen referendum. Successful and yeah, multiple.
How many meetings we had there and. Tapered off towards the end. Um you know, the first meeting, I think was great attendance. The second meeting was. Marginally less, not much, but the third and fourth meetings, they dropped off.
Yeah.
So so we need to that to present. Kind of needs are just in general that we're gonna be, this is what's coming up. Here is the conversation. This is what happened.
At that time, we presented the actual, you know, questions and resolutions. We had some schematics, posters. Uh we had. Baird Financial there to talk about tax impacts. We had the architects, we had uh general contractors. We had the administration and board. It's kind of a panel. So we kind of had a presentation and then it was open for Q and A. And act then, we didn't have the streaming and technology, so we could we could stream. I don't know, we could talk about that strategy if we feel like it's no in person or not or. Offer meals, feed people, you know, there's all kinds of different strategies.
I think in person, because when we tried to do some of those online, people would jump on and we had to, it was hard to manage. Remote, it felt like. I don't know what everybody else felt like. It felt like people would dominate.
At least offer it.
Yeah.
Um even if it's just, there's no interaction possible, but you can watch and listen. But then we have to offer that. I think we're gonna. There's gonna be some pretty negative feedback. We don't have to offer that. Online attendance, but you see not necessarily feedback, but they won't watch this.
Agreed.
Can we? Have a few of us that think about and come back with a proposal for what a community structure might look like?
Structure of the community task force?
I think a couple of us ought to sit down with you and maybe with market Johnson. I don't, you know.
Yeah.
Vaughn, I don't care, you know, Vaughn's been involved.
Lots of experience.
A whole bunch of them. One that didn't. And it done in lots of different districts, but.
Yeah, and they don't charge for that.
Yeah, I think we should, we should be really purposeful about it and. Kind of like people being able, anybody can come, but you don't leave membership a chance. You have people. And it's not just people that are pro. You need to talk to people that you know are a little reluctant.
I would love to have the loudest voices against it there in the room. And and yeah, so they are completely informed.
Their objections and.
And if they're, yeah, then they can, it's, yeah, a lot harder. Yeah.
Why? Sit on a little group to think about it. I think it should be one of the meetings.
All right, let's let's plan it. We also like to set up. Meeting to be part of that.
I would add, I don't know if I shouldn't be though.
Why not?
I could do it.
Good.
Yeah.
You'll have to post it.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's a committee, even if it's just two of us.
Yep. All right. I'll uh. I'll have an email out to you tomorrow and we'll start looking at dates and get that going, because.
I think.
We need to, we need to be uh planning or inviting in July and have our first meeting in August, early August, probably. Okay.
You know, next week's tough. The ones that have all, the ones that have passed, we had. Community people, two community people that led that. They were, you know, call the meeting to order it. They were the ones. So it didn't look like a board committee. It wasn't dominated by administration. You know, Vaughn or somebody, Mark and Johnson probably leads the discussion. But to have a couple of community people. You know, if they. Goes our way, those people might also be the leaders of, you know, that committee ends up being a yes.
I think it's a big part of our, big part of our planning is brainstorming lists of who needs to be invited.
Well, because there's gonna be more knows than yes, that's right.
Yeah.
I mean, they're so busy.
Yeah, true.
Yeah.
How were those people selected or what it is?
It was an open invite and I I think there were sixty at the first meeting. We had lots of planning.
It was open, but we each of us like recruited two or three people. To make sure, we need your voice at the meeting. And so, you know, while it looked completely open, we encouraged a few people to come. Because your voice is important in the community and we need to hear it.
I've got those lists and I I can bring that to our planning meeting and show you exactly can we'll talk, yeah, key. Influential people in different communities and neighborhoods and developments. Yeah. Like you said, the yeses and the no's, uh especially the the uh Wednesday morning quarterbacks after the referendum. Uh really interested in. That offered their. Opinion and how they would have done it. So I think, all right, come to the table.
Yeah.
Try to get a goosey.
Let's call them right now.
Yeah.
Let's go through Facebook.
All right, good discussion. Uh next is consideration of the WI twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Senior high school membership renewal exhibit fault C.
Any questions? Brian's here. Why is it's pretty self-explanatory?
In the virtual, the virtual, so those kids can participate in the high school. Virtual associate membership is till they those kids can participate in athletic.
Can I stand alongside this? Please. All right, um so our. Our resident virtual students can participate in our high school sports teams. Open enrolled virtual students into our charter and that. Um and we talked about this about a year ago at this time, because we needed to have that in board policy for um. Enrollment and divisional placement.
But open enroll in seat can participate.
Yeah, we could have included those two hundred and seventy-two, right? Uh open enrolled in virtual students, but that, you know, would have bumped us up. A division in most every sport and it's thought, well, that realistically aren't gonna participate. So why would we have that kind of get.
Because they live in. Wausau or.
Yeah.
There's no doubt about this. We need to do it if we want our kids to participate in high school sports.
As you said, the P is.
We Jen's not here to tell us whether it's in the budget.
It's in the budget? We just need um. Yep, motion and then you sign the document. Send it in.
When we were playing sports, I actually autograph that one prior. Was in favor.
I pose.
We can play sports this year, Brian.
Yeah, security.
Sweating that one a little bit there. All right, uh core agenda items. Um. This one is consideration of board treasure to approve post-board meeting invoices for July twenty twenty-one. Uh that's because we only have one meeting in July. Um so we need a motion to allow our charter to approve, come in and approve those. Any questions? Okay, all right, those in favor?
We do it twice a year.
This is very typical. On the calendar or getting this line up, so.
July and December every year, because there's just one board meeting and there's bills to be paid every two weeks.
All right, uh next on the agenda, consideration approval of an additional varsity assistant wrestling coach starting in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I'm back.
Could you stand by?
I'm gonna stand aside again though.
Okay.
Um so two weeks ago, kind of presented presented information. I researched coach holder because I didn't want my bumbling and stumbling through my words to. Misrepresent or not represent our kids. So he did write up a little email um about the needs. Can I read that? So for Coach Holder, um his main points about the addition of a third coach at the high school level. Um for him, it comes down to supervision and safety. Um for practices, wrestling is maybe most hands-on sport when it comes to coaching. Um the coaches will work out and wrestle with their athletes in practice. Adding another coach allows them to do that more efficiently and effectively. This creates a safer environment with another set of eyes in the room. Um next is over half our meets, um our tournaments, and they can have multiple athletes competing at the same time. There's three tournaments where it's not unusual to have three or four athletes wrestling at the same time, uh due to the number of mats. And so it becomes a problem of what corner, what chair you sit in, um who you choose to coach. And then if there's an injury, um they might not be able to be on the mat to help right away. Having another paid coach can alleviate those situations. And then um on days when there's when there's multiple times where JV might be at a different tournament than the varsity. And that leaves one paid coach at each location um and leads to supervision problems. And then he's got a little narrative. Um as we've added coaches at the high school level, we've always taken supervision and safety into consideration. As one of the main reasons to pursue another coach. As I look at our schedule and think how to better serve my wrestlers, adding a third coach at the top of my list. As a father and a coach, I would never want to put a wrestler in a situation where they look over and no one is sitting in their corner. This has happened due to our current situation. As you consider this proposal, please ask yourself, how would you feel or react if your own child? Has worked their tail off, only to have no one sitting in their corner. I know I I know how I feel about it about it as it has happened to my son and I'm his coach. Uh thanks for your time and consideration and all that you do as a board for a school district. If you have any further questions, please go for your contact me, Brad Holzer. Again, I felt like his words would be maybe more clear or thorough than mine, so. So that's what we're asking for to kind of revisit it. Um it would be an assistant coach. At the varsity assistant pay rate of three thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. Um and we have given that to Jen previously to see how that works in the budget, so that will not be necessarily a surprise to her. But Jen's okay with it and it's a safety and security issue, basically coaching issue. We're looking at number of coaches for kids, the one-on-one on the sports. Nothing's really changed wrestling in two weeks, so.
And is it consistent within the entire athletic program, coach to to athlete ratio? I know that they vary by sport, but it's not. Whack-a-mole, whack-a-mole or just, you know, we're gonna do this coach this year, right? It's consistent.
Nope, and it's it's pretty consistent with kind of the increasing numbers that like prior to my time here, because that was a year ago. Um you know, some of the other increases to to baseball or softball, girls golf, um as those numbers, as those numbers come up. We try to serve the kid with another coach. I can't remember doing this recent past with golf as well.
Yeah, with three girls golf coaches, because of numbers.
Do you have motion on this or?
I have is a. Just so we don't have to keep coming back to it or with this big class coming in.
Yeah.
Again, is that?
So.
Are there other ones that we need to do? Just because it would be nice to take care of it.
I had Lori Muzel um and Chance Lane. Let's look at their registration numbers. And then I pulled kind of our freshman participation numbers for like the last. Last two years, so um eighth grade participation in football um in nineteen twenty was thirty-six kids. Eighth grade participation in twenty twenty-one was thirty-five kids. In volleyball, eighth grade participation nineteen twenty was twenty-seven kids, twenty twenty-one was twenty-five kids. Cross country in nineteen twenty was fourteen kids and twenty twenty-one was seventeen kids. So there's. The first one went up. Um boys' basketball was twenty-two kids in nineteen twenty and twenty-four kids in twenty twenty-one. Um girls' basketball did have a jump and I can speak to that in a minute. Nineteen twenty, eighth grade participation was nine kids. In twenty twenty-one, it was fifteen. Um wrestling nineteen twenty participation was twelve kids and twenty twenty-one was notch. Um so we're not seeing kind of these big jumps in the participation based on that bubble class. But these these numbers will necessitate having a third girls' basketball coach, which is already in the budget. We didn't fill it last year. Um we had a hard time finding some interest and. Um with the numbers that we had last year, um we were able to make it work, David and Varsity, but we will, we will have three coaches this next year. Hopefully with board approval here in the next.
It's currently posted, correct?
It's posted, yeah. Yeah, I didn't go back three years, but I. Yeah, I didn't go back three years, but I believe that last year's freshman class was also big and that's our current.
And then they had some big factors from basketball. Because it was a huge team last year, so. And then the tournament thing is they are in two separate locations. Like if there's a JV tournament, they take all those JV kids. And that alone could take three coaches and you have a varsity meet on the same day. And they're still going to be utilizing a bunch of volunteers just to even cover the mats. What it is. You made motion. Yeah, I second.
I need further discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you.
I'm the next one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, consideration, next on the agenda, consideration approval of restructure of the Panther Productions Director and Panther Productions Coordinator position. Starting in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Yeah, not much, not much new with this one. Um, except I reached out to a few people and I found one person that is willing to step in and do some of the basketball games. Um, and so now much has changed with, and and I wanted to make it clear from last time because I feel like I didn't explain it very well. This is not a. This is not a Brian Johnson thing trying to take money away from Mitch Fleming and Brian Malater. Um, they approached me and said. We're looking to get out of the winter sports because it's hard on our families, it's hard on our schedule, and they want to stick doing with the fall sports. Um, continue with wrestling and they're looking to take basketball off their plates. And doing that, they knew that they were contracted to do basketball previously. And so if they're taking basketball off, they're. But when it go down, any more money they're compensating. Um, that also gives us a little bit of money to. Either try to set up a new contract, which that would be something we would do in the spring, or pay it hourly as a game worker rate. And so that's kind of a, a urgent, but future problem. Um, in my eyes, I would just like to get the two contracts set for Brian and Mitch. So that we know where we're at going forward. Um, and then attack the issue of how to get basketball streamed with. Uh, a couple of people I've talked to or possibly a college intern or a college student, because I have reached out to. Um, UWS broadcast and journalism team and I had a, a student who's going to be a senior. That said he was interested, he's a broadcast journalism major, would love sports and he was interested in coming and doing some of our streaming. So. So there's some flexibility there, but I'm trying to find a way to get him, the students some money, trying to find a way to entice some other people to do the winter sports for us. Because it's, it's tough on, tough on the dads with young kids. Um, and so then those amounts, um. They were, they were categorized as a director and a coordinator with a director getting paid four thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And a coordinator getting paid two thousand and forty dollars. Um, and those are set to go up by a percentage increase, but they would be moved down to a leader position and advisor position. The leader position would be three thousand three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and the advisor would be one thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars. Which then would kind of free up that space to give someone else an adult game over paid per hour to stream the basketball. And Brian said he would also still help to coordinate that or work that if a few games pop up that we can't cover.
So a good plan.
All those in favor?
All right.
Oppose?
Thank you.
Got anything else?
Other than, other than wishing we would have pushed them to the first gen item.
I'll make it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for following up on that discussion.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Others, if we have anything other. All right, um, important upcoming dates. You can read all of those.
Yeah, um, and it's leading to six and seven.
Do we have to? No, we already did that.
Okay.
Take a motion to move into closed session.
It's roll call vote, right?
Motion, right? And then. Sorry, I have to read this whole thing. This is the worst part. For Wisconsin's.
That's the worst part. Just wait.
For me, for you. Considering employment, motion compensation or performance evaluation data, any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Um, we're going to talk twenty twenty-one superintendent quarterly goals review.
We're going to close session. I.
Hi.
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 All right, closed session. Minute break quick.
Thank you, Brian.